All right. Good evening, everyone. I, we are going to call the regular meeting of the Collingswood Board of Education to order. Roll call, please. Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Ms. Mello?
Here.
Ms. Rivera?
Here.
Mrs. Severino?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mrs. Caden?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. [applause] A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic, which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberating justice, for all.
All right, there is no executive session at this time, so we have, this is the, anytime kids come to present, it's the highlight of the board meeting. So we have the High School Musical Year in Town here to give us a preview of what to expect next weekend, so we will get out of the way so that we can watch it as well. Please enjoy.
[inaudible]
Hi, everyone. Corey, you're our teacher in elementary and kindergarten here at Middle School, and I'm so, so pleased and proud to present to you two numbers that are up to the title of the Year in Town. Unfortunately, I know, you can see on the back of my shirt here, not the best, but it's an awesome story. The premise is that we're in a future city where corporate greed has caused all of the year rules to be taken over by a company called Jordan Doing Company. And so you're going to see a song here called "The Top Song," and you're going to see a song by our Core Person Ensemble, and they're going to be taking a song called "Not That Girl." So I'm still looking forward, guys, so try to listen to them all, so we'll see what you think. [applause]
[music]
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 We start first with what's the impact on schools? So we participate in targeted discussion with our administrative team. So all of the school principals, vice principals, district administrators. We start there. We then go to, we have a public health technical advisory group, which consists of board members, doctors, nurses, public health experts at the college level, in addition to principals and teachers, in order to kind of talk through, well, this is the, this is the current guidance. What should next steps be? What are some of the factors that we need to consider? And then more specifically, how do we communicate it? That has been our process for the last two years. And we, we believe that that's the right process because we're getting multiple stakeholders in the deliberative process prior to making any recommendations for the board to consider. So we know that students are being communicative with their principals and their assistant principals. And principals and assistant principals are advocating based on their dialogue that they've had with students.
I just also wanted to add in that you're meeting regularly with other superintendents in the area to discuss these issues. And the, you all get together with the New Jersey Department of Health, or Camden County Department of Health. We're on either weekly or biweekly, right? So it's, it's lots of different pieces being put together.
So Camden, Camden County is a bit unique. We are one of the few counties that meets, throughout this pandemic, that meets weekly with the New Jersey Department of Education and the New Jersey Department of Health. There's about 150 people on, on the call weekly. And we talk through all of these different challenges and, and attempt to come to some level of consensus with a few variables based on the diverse needs of the 23 districts within our county. But on some things, we are, are pretty solid on. For example, one of the pieces of guidance that was recommended by the Department of Health about six to eight weeks ago in the middle of the surge, was the recommendation to not allow students who were unvaccinated to participate in athletics or extracurricular. My colleagues and I rejected the guidance because we did not want to negatively impact our students, specifically our students who were depending very heavily on scholarships and athletic participation in order to get to the next level for college. So that's an example of taking feedback at the local level and then striking the right balance of what it made sense. Some of the districts implemented robust testing. Some implemented intermittent testing. We decided to go a bit more robust so that we wouldn't have to feel negative implications on the other end.
I have a few questions. Thank you for, for running that down and the update on Friday. With, when you talk about reasons for going back to masking, the Cali index being one of those pieces. If parents see that the Cali index is going back to high, what is going to be the district's response to, to man, going back to masking?
So currently, the recommendation is, is that during periods of high or very high transmission, it is prudent to coordinate with your local health department to determine whether or not universal masking makes the most sense. We would continue to use that process in concert with the health department and then make a recommendation for the board.
Okay. So just what I'm hearing is that we're not saying that if we get back to high, that's an automatic, we're back to universal masking?
Correct. So we, there was a Q and A session on Friday with the Department of Health. And what they look for is a longer term trend. Sometimes there will be a, a seven to 10 day outlier. So they would monitor it over an extended period of time to determine, is it an actual wave or is it, is it an outlier?
Okay. In terms of active outbreaks, do you know how many we have had in schools during this period?
So far, my count is we've had seven.
Seven, okay. If we were to see that number, let's say in the next few months, matching seven, is that something where we would go back and consider looking at the masking policy?
No. The, the districts have had a multiple layer strategy of mitigation. And because we have multiple layers to our mitigation, it wouldn't be an all or nothing at that point. They would look at it class by class and then expand that out to the specific school if there was an outbreak that was beyond the scope of that particular class. So, but it wouldn't be district wide unless you saw clusters across multiple schools, multiple, and multiple grade levels. So we'd be looking at it on a classroom by classroom basis and on a case by case basis.
Thank you. For staff, so staff will be mask optional as well?
Yes.
Okay. And then I know, maybe this might just be a clarifying, but you talked about if we get down to green levels, which I really hope that we do get down to, parents will still be allowed to send their kids in with a mask if they, if they choose, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then my, my last thing, I think within the updates, we said that we would be limiting the, the schoolwide notifications out to parents if there was a case in a school. I would ask that the school, that the board still receive those notifications so that we are aware of the number of cases that are happening in schools. Just that that's not going out to the communities. I think it's important that we're, we are monitoring that.
So I wanted to ask a clarifying question about the first part of Matt's series of questions because I was under the impression that the metric we were using was the Cali index. And if it, so right now, because we're in moderate, we go ma, moderate or below, I guess, right, or green. We would go mask optional. But if it goes back up, my, my reading of the DOH guidelines was that, that their recommendation was to go back to universal masking. Is that like, what was, maybe I was misunderstanding what you were saying? That does it become like, it's a certain period of time? It's not just one report of, of red that would trigger going back to universal masking?
So based on the, the Q and A on Friday, it said that there are sometimes outliers. So the, the threshold numbers, I know that the threshold, the threshold numbers from a, from a statistics perspective are constantly being reevaluated. Hence, the CDC changed their guidelines. Last week, 95% of all counties qualified for the highest level of mitigation strategies. When they actually unpacked the data and looked at localized transmission rates, it actually brought it down 60%, down to about 35%. So the Cali index looks at it by region. So that would be the first trigger for the discussion. But then they would also expect for us to work with the, the local county, not the region, to determine whether or not it's a regional issue or whether it's county specific. It is very possible that within the region, you could go to high status, but within your county, you could be at moderate low.
So, so for parents that are kind of monitoring that to know what to expect from, let's say, week to week or whatever, hopefully this is, you know, not, not something we need to worry about. But just in case we do, they, you know, they see that it goes, goes up to red. Basically, there would be some sort of communication about this applies to us or it doesn't within a day or so of, of that, based on discussions with the Department of Health. Would that be the way to think that through?
Yes.
I just had a couple of questions about communication too. I think one to piggyback on yours. I do also add the request that please send the board the information that I was asking for. And now that I don't have a child in the district, I'm frequently not getting updates that families are getting. So is there a way that we can please make sure that every board member is getting communications that go out to fam? I don't need to know when the book sales are. But major, if there's a district wide communication, they're not always coming to board members or this board member? That's one question I have, a request. What I think I just heard you say is we are now not communicating out to families if there's outbreaks in schools. Is that what you were just asking about, Matt?
So, no, let me, let me clarify. So the current practice that has been for the last two years is that if, for example, say you are at Zane North and there is a positive COVID in grade one and there are close contacts, the entire Zane North school community would be notified that there was a positive case. It's now been directed, because we are no longer in the middle of a surge, that the classroom, the affected classroom would receive the notification opposed to sending it out to the entire school.
I hope that we would keep considering that. Parents are now being asked to make a decision daily whether they think it's smart to, to mask their own child. And they know whether their children are going to before and after school programs at other schools or participating in, in sports that might cross schools or other activities. And for them to make an informed choice about whether to send a mask or not, I think it's important that they know as much as they can about the district outbreaks.
So is that, is that something we could change? That we could continue with the schoolwide notifications? Because that's an excellent point about before and after care and the mixing of grades and siblings and all sorts of, of issues that...
We can continue.
I just had a quick question about the test to stay. My first question is, so that's, that's open to all ages of students, right? From pre-K all the way up to 12?
No. Kindergarten through grade 12. So the test to stay is based on students that we exclude due to close contact in school. So if a decision on the weekends or a, a, a party was the culminating event, that would not be a test to stay from our perspective. The district is currently footing the, the bill for this process. So any student that we exclude, we believe should be a part of our, our responsibility to, to keep them in school.
So that would be like anybody who was a close contact, is, is basically, or? No, I just want to make sure I was understanding. Okay. Okay, thank you.
The reason why it is not applied to preschool is because the model of preschool does not preclude students not taking off their masks. So there are multiple periods during the day in preschool where they are unmasked. There's also a time where they are napping without their mask. And the sheer model of the creative curriculum has students sometimes in extremely close contact with each other. So the test to stay does not apply to preschool aged children. It, it starts in kindergarten all the way to 12th grade.
So if, going back to the, the scenario you just said about a, a weekend party and a kid tests positive, can they test every 48 hours at a different site? And so therefore almost like have their own test to stay program? So you can still do that even if you don't qualify through the school? You can still do the 48 hour testing?
Yes. The goal, the goal is to keep students in school as much as possible. So our test center would be exclusively for students that our nurses have excluded from school. But the process is still the process. So any student that's participating in, in, in the test to stay would need to produce a negative test every 48 hours for the first five days of their notification of close contact. If it falls on a weekend and they're unable to test, it would be the very next eligible day. And as long as they remain in status, they can continue to come and, to come to school. Day six through 10, regardless of negative status, they would still need to be fully masked in order to participate in the test to stay program.
For the preschool students, I get the whole, the difference in the, in the program and in structure and, and the, and the lessons. And it's a different setup. They're young. But you're saying, so if a preschool child is exposed, they still have to quarantine?
Yes. Five days.
Five days. And then they come back? I guess my concern is that I know we've specifically heard about concerns from preschool parents who have had to repeatedly quarantine and it's caused issues. And so when do we anticipate being more consistent across, being able to be more consistent across the board?
So right now, we know that there has been pushback in inquiries about preschool, first from the, at the district level, back to the state. Preschool is categorized as childcare. It's not categorized as formal schooling. And therefore preschool falls under the same rules and regulations as daycare centers. So that's really what we're arguing. We're trying to, we're trying to advocate for that. We've got another meeting coming up on Thursday and we're hoping that we can get some level of easement on that policy.
Okay. I do understand that childcare restrictions are way more tight than, than school, uh, school age. And this is more of a request and I don't know how appropriate this is or what the rules are, but we're having an open board discussion and we do have a student board rep. Is it, just wanted to say if she's able to ask questions, that we encourage her to? I would love to hear any questions you have, if you're comfortable. Sorry to put you on the spot.
I don't have to come up with a question right this minute.
You don't have to at all.
I don't currently have any questions, but thank you. You're welcome.
I'm sorry, I was thinking about the, the pre-K thing. If, if you were, you were just saying if we move to green, does that change any of the, does that change anything for close contact pre-K kids or no?
So currently, the guidance in terms of quarantine and isolation has not changed from the CDC or the Department of Health. We anticipate that as we learn more about this new variant, there could be some change. The same way they shifted from a man, a mandatory 10 to 14 days, they shifted down to five. There could be some additional changes down the pipeline. We're just not sure what those changes are.
I had another clarifying question about the close contacts. When you mentioned being up to date, meaning getting, because I know middle school and high school students are even eligible for boosters at this point. Is that something that if a student thinks they're fully backed, meaning they got two shots but they didn't get a booster, they're not considered up to date? Can they be dinged as a close contact and have to go through the test to stay procedure if they don't get boosted? Is that, is that what I was hearing?
Yes. We're, we're seeking, we're waiting for clarification. We're expecting to get additional clarification on Thursday. What happened was that the state kind of slid that one in there. And there was no clarification attached with it. It was two sentences that said effective February 1st, that up to date status would be changing. But there was really no guidance around it. And it was not part of the Q and A this past Friday. But I know that it's on the docket for this Thursday.
That feels like that would be a big, a big thing. So I, yeah, just encourage, whatever the communication that comes out about that goes out to, to parents immediately because that could affect some, some students' status for sure.
There's one additional component also. So currently, Collinswood and Oakland School Districts have a partnership with the New Jersey Immunization Information System, NJIIS. It syncs up directly with our student information system in Genesis. This only applies for students who were vaccinated in the state of New Jersey. We know that there are some children who have doctors in Delaware and Pennsylvania. Those systems don't communicate or don't talk to, to the New Jersey system. So we encourage all families to coordinate with your school nurse to make sure that the school has the most accurate information about your child so that your child is not subject to quarantine if they don't meet the criteria.
The, the numbers that you stated earlier, that 86%, 56%, 62% for secondary students, that is the current understanding of fully vaccinated? Or that is including boosters?
That's the current understanding.
So not include, do we have any sense of what those numbers will look like once boosters are included as a full?
It's really hard to tell, but it would probably be a significant decrease.
I did want to ask a question about, because in our committee meetings, when you were talking to us about all this, you said you would be speaking with teachers and nurses the next day about the, the onus that's being placed on them now with these new changes to have seating charts in place at all times where they are indicating who in the class is masked and unmasked. How was that received? Did you guys work anything out with all that? That, you know, that's a, that's a big extra component for, for teachers now.
So our educators have already been maintaining, for the purposes of contact tracing, been maintaining current seating charts. One of the requests that came in one of our, in one of our planning meetings was to add a, a component in the attendance system that educators are already using to be able to notate mask or, mask or unmasked status, to be able to assist in the contact tracing if it is necessary. So we will be updating the Genesis system on the teacher's side so that it's not an extra component. And it gives us valuable data so that we can actually go back on a day by day basis to determine who is in the consideration group so that we don't accidentally or unnecessarily quarantine the wrong students. The positive is, is that we have, have had minimal to no cases in the last week to week and a half, which is a good trend. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna knock on wood and, and hope that that is the continued trend. And hopefully quarantine will be just a not so fond memory.
That would be very nice. One last thing I wanted to ask was, or to ask that be put in the, the guidance that's going to be sent out going forward. We talked about this in committee meetings that, just to, to clarify, because now we're, we're going to have a situation, and I'm envisioning this probably more at the middle school and high school arena, but who knows? That now it's choice, right? It's some families and their kids are going to choose to wear masks. Some are going to choose not to. And whatever they choose is okay. Like that's, that's their choice. And so to, to make, to make it clear that the mask is considered a distinguishing characteristic under the HIB guidelines with our HIB policy and would be considered so if there was any kind of harassment or bullying on either side of the argument about masking, that this is not something that's, that's to be used as a tool for bullying. I think it would be good to, to make sure that that gets put into the guidance. And then finally, could you just tell us what? Tell us and the, the parents listening what to expect in terms of guidance going forward in the next couple of days after, after we've had this discussion now?
Within the next day or two, we'll be giving probably a one or two pager, which kind of reviews what was discussed tonight. And then a synthesis of what does the new guidance mean effective March 7th? With the corresponding data and information that is used to, to go into the recommendation. Questions about school specific protocols and processes should go back to the, should go back to the school. We'll be meeting with all of the principals this week in order to, to talk through what should communication also look like as a second layer to their specific school communities, which would go out at the end of this week. So the district will be sending out formal notification based on the, the conversation tonight within the next day or two. And then no later than the end of the week, students will be receiving from their school targeted guidance about what they should expect in this new, this new normal.
And then finally, just kind of clarifying for everyone, roles and responsibilities, I guess, so to speak. This discussion and, and later on in the agenda is just kind of a, an adoption of the revised School Health and Safety Plan, that we already have a policy in place directing the school district to create a masking policy. So there is, there is no policy to, to write or to change. We're not voting on any of that. We are, we are just coming to consensus that we are in agreement with the recommendations of the district to go to the mask optional status under these specific conditions. And then that's what we'll, I guess, be voting on later in the meeting. But otherwise, it's, it's their job, the district's job, excuse me, to, to then create all of those protocols and, and carry it all out. So did I, does that make sense for everyone? Okay. Because I know there's always confusion with that. Before I close out this committee of the whole, does anyone else have anything they'd like to say or ask on this, on this topic or I guess any other? All right. So can I get a motion to leave committee of the whole?
Some of.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for that discussion. Now we're going to move on to section five, future dates and miscellaneous information. Just wanted to point out that this Wednesday is an early dismissal for professional development. The, the fantastic preview of the musical you just saw is, is going to be happening next Thursday, Friday and Saturday in the middle school auditorium at 7:00 PM. And just to note for elementary families that there's the, the week of parent teacher conferences with early dismissals later in March. Section six is routine board business. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 24th, 2022 regular board meeting? And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
So before we get to public comment, I thought I would give Reagan the opportunity to give her student report. We'll move section nine up so that if she would like to get on with her evening, she, she can do so.
So for academics, we have the third marking period progress reports will be available for review on the Genesis Parent and Student Portals on Wednesday, March 2nd. And then we have a lot of college acceptances for the seniors. Emma Baxter, Roman College of South Jersey, Roland Cooper, Grand Canyon University, Martin Rooney, Louisiana State University, Seton Hall University, Stony Brook University, the College of New Jersey, England Institute of Technology, Isabel Tally, West Virginia University, and Rutgers University, Mason Wolf, LaSalle University, Thomas Jefferson University, and St. Joseph's University, Phoebe Burkhart, Flagler College, Sarah Johnson, Liberty University, Messiah University, University of Vermont, Penn State University, and Rutgers University, Tassia Tarrant, Seton Hall University, Moncler State University, Sescuhana University, Widener University, York College, Jaslyn Clearville, Messiah University, Ethan Shute, Roman College of South Jersey, Henry Tabak Phillips, University of Scranton, Dakota Williams, the University of Arizona, Chestnut Hill College, DeSales University, Seton Hall University, Holy Family University, Isabel Verderen, Monmouth University, Maya Wilson, Camden County College, Jacob Bowson, Camden County College, Chloe Rogowski, Pennsylvania College of Technology, Justin Van Manzoor, Rutgers University, Camden and New Brunswick, Emily Cranston, Albright College, Kent State University, Moncler State University, Thomas Jefferson University, and University of Delaware, Javont Daniels, William Patterson University, Jeff Jeffries, the College of New Jersey, Marion Margadichian, Rutgers University, Camden, Owen, Owen Ray Maris College, Chris, Crystal Rivera, Penn State University, Rider University, the College of New Jersey and University of Delaware, Reagan Riley, Roger Williams University, and University of Delaware, Amani Rome, Roman College of South Jersey, and Jonah Taylor, Moncler, Moncler State University, Roman University, Rutgers University, Camden and New Brunswick, the College of New Jersey, and University of Rhode Island. For athletics, the boys and girls winter track team finished up a successful season. Senior Jonah Taylor placed fifth at sectionals in high jump with a PR of 5'8". Sophomore Isaiah Pepe-Magro finished first at sectionals in the 200 meters and ran a PR of 53, 52 in the 400 meter. Junior Mia McConnell placed fourth at sectionals with a PR time of 957 in the 500, in the 55 meter. The boys four by four team finished fourth at sectionals. The boys basketball team had their senior night on February 22nd and played a big game against Borden Town and beat them in overtime 63, 53. Senior Ethan Thomas had 10 points. Sophomore Shaq Carter had two points. Sophomore Tomas Money had 10 points. Senior Mackay Bassett had 28 points. And senior Quentin Moss had 13 points. Boys basketball is also playing their first round playoff game right now in high school gym. For the girls basketball team, Maddie Iffey leads with 300 points for the season so far, 50 rebounds and five steals. The team also played their first round of playoffs at 4 o'clock ahead in township today, and they won 29, 27. Wrestling finished up their season and ended 27 and 3. The team won sectionals with a win against Haddonfield and collected their 900th program win. Junior Nate Iffey finished up his season by winning districts and his record was 28 and 12. He also qualified for regions. Senior Ryan Rogers finished up his career and ended the season 30 and 6, as well as moving on to regions after districts. Senior Zachary Kitchell finished up his high school wrestling career as a district champ, state qualifier, and 101 varsity wins. Senior Mike Regg ended his wrestling career as a two-time district champ, 36 and 8 on the season, a state qualifier, and sixth at Beast of the East. For extracurricular activities, there's a COVID vaccine clinic today, started at 3 and ends at 8 in the high school cafeteria. No appointments are necessary. The high school spring musical, You're in Town, will be held March 10th, 11th, and 12th. The CHF Athletic Hall of Fame is having their 5K run slash one mile walk on Saturday, April 2nd, to raise funds for student scholarships. Student council ran a successful blood drive this past Friday. 100 units, including 16 power red donations were collected, exceeding the goal of 89 units. The interact club raised money for the American Heart Association. And lastly, the Bring Change to Mind Club made love bracelets to show gratitude to peers. And some, and senior leaders woke up early on Saturday morning to volunteer at the Chili Triangle 5K.
Thank you, Reagan. How many colleges have you been accepted to? Because I feel like it's some sort of a record.
I'm not sure.
It's that many. Well, thank you very much. And you are, as always, welcome to stay, but we also fully understand if you need to get going as well. Thank you for that. Okay. So moving on to section seven, it is our first chance for public comment. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community the opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate, clarifying communication will go out later in the week, and for more general concerns, they may be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. If someone would like to make a public comment, they can come up, stay and state their name and address, and keep their comments to five minutes or less.
Good evening. My name is Joe Winter. I live on East Dean Avenue in Collinswood. I'm here tonight to express my concerns about recent decisions around coronavirus protocols in our district. Foremost, I'm concerned that the mask requirement is being dropped. High filtration masks are a low-cost and effective way to reduce transmission, especially in crowded spaces like classrooms. For a public school district with limited funds, dropping a low-cost intervention is a mistake. Just last month, students were encouraged to upgrade their masks to high filtration masks, and I was glad to see that many did that. We've worked so hard as a community to do everything to try, to minimize transmission, and I worry that this decision is premature. I understand the pressure you're facing from parents and society at large, but I think it's reckless to drop the mask mandate by picking it on. Well, never mind. You're doing it by the metrics. Okay, I'm gonna move on. With the mask optional policy, it is more important now that everyone who is required to wear a mask wears high filtration masks, such as N95, KN95, or KF94. As far as I can tell, you will still require students who are in the test-to-stay program, and students returning early from isolation on quarantine on days six to 10, to adhere to a strict masking protocol. Please make it a requirement. The students in these situations must wear high filtration, well-fitting masks, since they are at much higher risk of being infectious. Cross masks, don't cut it. Additionally, since those students returning early from quarantine and isolation are expected to eat lunch off-campus, please consider making that a rule for the test-to-stay group as well. Our test-to-stay program only tests kids every other day, not daily, so there is a huge potential for missed infections and infections periods. Finally, please continue to share data about case counts within our schools. It is our right to know what is happening within the school district, and not reporting these cases doesn't mean that they don't exist. As a family with several medically vulnerable people, it is the very least this district can do. I know we're all tired of the pandemic, but we can't wish it away by pretending cases don't exist. Our family lost another member last month during the Omicron wave. This was the fourth so far to die from coronavirus. There are many families like ours in this district. This district has kids in multi-generational households, kids with immunocompromised family members, kids who aren't able to be eligible to be vaccinated, yet all of whom are at risk of serious illness or death in Collinswood. Public schools are different from a movie theater, a restaurant, or a casino. They are a public, shared space that everyone has the right to access, immunocompromised or not. We, all of us, all of us, owe it to each other to make our schools safe. Our family has tried very, very hard to live up to that and to help make Garfield safer. I urge you all to please continue to do the same. Thank you for your time.
It's no surprise the lady in scrubs is gonna stand up in front of you. My name is Jackie Patterson. I have a son in pre-K at Sharp. I have a daughter in first grade at Tatum. They both attend before and aftercare, so my husband and I can work. Kudos to the previous speaker. Obviously, school is very different than the medical world. The way that you do things, the way you conduct yourselves is very different. COVID has made those two cross paths, and we've needed to work together to figure this out. To enlighten you all, in research and in trials in the medical field, we try to change one variable at a time. That way, we can see what's working and what's not. With everything that's been rolling out between the test-to-stay, the mask optional, there's a lot of variables. I urge you to maybe change one at a time, so that we don't increase the risk unnecessarily. Additionally, we all know that vaccination eligibility for the younger population is just around the corner. My son, as of right now, is not eligible to be vaccinated. We were hoping, you know, end of February, early March, he would be able to, but CDC has decided to postpone that and delay it. He's still going to be attending school. He's still going to be wearing a mask. He won't qualify for the test-to-stay, it sounds like. If we could hold off on this, I'm not saying don't do it altogether. If we could delay this until the youngest population in the schools are eligible for the vaccine, to me, that seems to make sense. It seems like a win-win option. Additionally, again, my daughter and my son will remain masked. Even if they are masked and they get an exposure, the test-to-stay is still a hardship for my family. I would still need to leave work to coordinate my children getting tested. My job is essential. I'm an ICU employee. I've been taking care of COVID patients from the beginning. I am an essential employee to try to coordinate, even if it's convenient for most people, it's still time away from me taking care of my patients. The test-to-stay option, while it sounds great, it's still a hardship for a lot of families. I urge you to consider these before making any changes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Shell. I have seven children, and five are in district. I have high schoolers, middle schoolers, and kids at Tatum. And I just wanted to share our family's experience. It's a little different than what the previous people have shared. I have two children. My youngest two, they're fifth graders. They're adopted from Haiti, and they're English-as-a-second-language learners. My, one came home when she was, like, preschool age, and one came home just weeks before COVID. She literally has spent her entire American schooling with a mask on. It has not been easy at all, on top of nine years of living in an orphanage. Something she shared with me the other day that was kind of eye-opening, and she said, "Mommy, my teachers in America have never seen my pretty smile. I lived in Haiti for nine years, and nobody ever made me wear a mask." And now she's here, and it has been a struggle for her. She's a rock star. She's doing amazing. But it has been very difficult on top of the trauma that she's already had. So I just want you to, I'm speaking for other people. There's other families that have children that may have a difficult time hearing their teachers and learning, and, and what they have lost already by, not only did she have to wear the mask, she had to learn a computer. She's never seen a computer, those kind of things. It's been a struggle. And I just wanted to thank you for considering dropping the mask. I really do appreciate that. I've also seen what it's done to my older kids, and, and just it, silly things, like, you know, their, their faces, their, their acne, their self-esteem, their, their struggles. And one last thing before I finish is, the same child in fifth grade was giving a presentation the other day in one of her special classes, not in her main class, and her mask slipped down while she was holding the microphone. And the teacher yelled at her in the middle of her presentation, didn't stop, didn't wait till she was done, embarrassed her in front of the whole class because her mask slipped down. Those kind of things are really impacting our kids, and I just appreciate you considering the whole picture. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Ooh, hi, everybody. My name's Jonathan Rose. Oh, I'm ironizing this one. I have two four-and-a-half-year-old pre-K students at Sharp, two at Ritchie, on Ritchie Avenue. God, this is, first of all, I want to thank you all, because I know this is not a fun job and a thankless job, and, you know, everybody's up here yelling at you. So thank you for listening. We appreciate that. And I appreciate, and I'm really trying to move through the world with empathy, and I really, I heard the last parent. I heard you. I hear, I really, truly hear that struggle from an older perspective. But from my very narrow lens of having four-and-a-half-year-old twins in a pre-K program, which, like you had said, very vulnerable population based on maskless time and all of that, I'm gonna bring up the word, I'm saying it, it's inequitable to take these masks away from our children when they do not have access to the one safeguard, the vaccine. They do not have access to that. That is the definition of inequality. They're, it's ageism. They're four-and-a-half years old. They're not five. They're so close. And just like our nurse friend said, I'm not saying wear masks forever. I know, this is not fun. I don't want my sweet little four-and-a-half-year-old faces to be covered either. They're beautiful. And I, that's, that's what we all want. We really, truly believe, as parents, we all want that. I, I do. I'm not here to say, keep those masks on forever. Like, no, of course, take them off once it's safe. But it's, it's truly about access to the vaccine. That is the one safeguard. I had the quote, and my phone's over at my chair, so I don't have it. The governor quoted that as one of the hugest reasons why this has been lifted on March 7th, is vaccination. Well, when, I believe the number is 240 pre-K. That's a massive pre-K program in this district, as you all know, right? That's roughly 10% to 12% of the population that does not have access to the safeguards that we are trying to justify taking these things off for, right? That's my main point. I beg you, please, not forever, just until the vaccine is safe and accessible to my sweet little kids and all the sweet little kids across the district. Then take them off. Please, let's have a maskless party. I'm, I'm all for that. But until then, it's inequity. It's, it's ageism based on, on their, them not having access to the one guardrail. That is justification for taking the masks off. Thank you all so much for listening, and thank you all, parents, everyone in the town. We love it here so far. Thank you for listening.
Good evening. Joe Rosado, 212 East Palmer Avenue. I wasn't going to speak today. I wasn't even going to come today. All right, I'm gonna say a few words about masking. Masks don't work. Vaccines, they really don't work either. And that's the new science. That's the new data that we're getting. That's the data that I'm getting. That's what I'm seeing. So, two years ago...
We need, we need to let each person have their five minutes to speak.
Thank you. So, two years ago, when COVID was happening, and we were masking, and social distancing, and quarantining, and going virtual schooling, I was definitely against all of it. And, but I followed along. That, at the time, was the science. That was the data. Today, that science has changed. The data has changed. And we're seeing in school districts very close to ours, and across the country, mask optional scenarios happening, because we're following the new science, the new data. Now, what I'm seeing, though, is a lot of people are doubling down and saying, "Well, that's not the science. No, that's not the science. That's not, that's not the data." The data and the science worked for you two years ago, and now it has changed. If you refuse to look at it, listen to it, reflect on it, and still, if you're still deciding from two years ago, that science is still the same. It's the same today that it was two years ago. If you're still in that mindset, then what's happening is you're toeing the party line, and you're not in the best interest of children. Because what we're seeing with these masks is negative, negative consequences with our children. That is the new science. That is the new data. If you don't want to accept it, don't accept it. But that is the new data. That is the new science. It wasn't that way two years ago, but it is now. It is now. If you refuse to look at it, then, I mean, what can I tell you? What can I tell you if you refuse to look at it? If you refuse to look at how these masks are harmful for our children, if you do not see it, I cannot help you. Nobody can, really. It is harmful for them. I'm a teacher. I've been a teacher for 25 years. I teach at the elementary school level, the middle school level, and the high school level. I've been a teacher, yes, English as a second language. I see it daily. Daily, I see it. If you're not in the school system, you may see it on your children, but I see it on hundreds. I appreciate the reflection and the thought of going mask optional. I really do appreciate it. And I thank you for your time.
I have a question before we move forward with comments. Madam President, probably, you can answer. Should these comments just be specifically in response or for the board consideration and not directed to other public community members? Because I feel like that's a point of clarity we should make before moving forward.
Yes, my understanding of public comment is that the comments are to the, the board for, for their consideration, not to, not back and forth between community members. Yes. Anyone else like to speak?
Hello, my name is Mark Braceoff. I live on Park Avenue. Child goes to... So, yeah, okay, yeah. Hello, my name is Mark Braceoff, and my child goes to Garfield. She's a kindergarten. So, these have been great comments tonight. So, I just want to add, if I can, I'm really actually concerned about the vaccination rate. It's pretty low. I work at a university. Our vaccination rate is about 93%. And we're not gonna be removing masks probably till next year for many of the reasons that you heard tonight. So, one of the things that I've been learning about through this process is what we need to do to engage those that are unvaccinated. And part of that is to figure out why they're not vaccinated, and then do some mitigation efforts, because it's different for who, who those people are and why they do it. And what the national research is showing is that you can move people closer to vaccination than before, and we're starting to see that as FDA data is coming out. And so, what I would recommend is for you to re- as FDA data is coming out, and so, what I would recommend is for you to rethink what's going on here in terms of the mask optional policy, and think a little bit more about how we might be able to engage those that are unvaccinated and move those numbers for all the reasons that we heard tonight. 50% is, is really, really low. I think the national average is around like 60 to, between 60 and 70% is national averages, and so I think we should at least try to get to there before we move towards going maskless at this point, for all the reasons we heard, like young children, you know, older adults, all the, all those reasons, so, thank you for your consideration, thank you for your work, this is not an easy thing for, for our publics, the public to do, so.
Hi, my name's Aubrey Emmerich, I live on Harvard Avenue, and I have a first grader at Garfield, a kindergartner at Garfield, and a two-year-old at home, and I am very concerned with this new potential policy to remove mask mandate. First, Dr. McDowell, you mentioned several times that the, the purpose, the overall purpose is to keep kids in school more. I am not sure what this removing a mask mandate, when they are proven to stop the spread, is going to do to help keep kids in school. It feels awfully rushed, we've only been in this moderate level for a couple of weeks now, and now, all of a sudden, masks are going to disappear. I don't know if you've seen this setup in Garfield, I don't know if other schools are different, but there are 25 kids in my first graders' class, there are 25 kids in my kindergartners' class, they are on top of each other, they sit four to a table, and they have assigned seats, which is great, you know, so they can, so they can do the, the contact tracing, but I'm really afraid, when masks come off, what it's going to look like. They don't have the capacity, the space, to socially distance themselves in class. They're kindergartners, they're first graders, they also don't have the, they don't know how to stay away from each other, and I'm really concerned, my two-year-old at home cannot be vaccinated, I cannot get her protected from this right now, and if they come home with this because of unmasked kids, then, then what? You know, we've done two years of being super cautious, and now we have, you know, a virus with unknown long-term effects that I can't protect my youngest child from, that, that they could potentially now bring home from school because other kids aren't going to be masked. And also, how do I tell my five-year-old, if I want to send my five-year-old to school in a mask, how do I tell him to wear a mask even though half your other, half of your students might not be wearing it? And then what happens if he takes off the mask in school? Is a teacher supposed to, are they supposed to have the burden now, on top of everything else they have to do, to make sure that the kids whose parents want them to wear masks are properly wearing masks, or do they just let them take them off in the middle of the day? I mean, I don't know what my, my, my five-year-old is going to do in school when he sees other kids not wearing a mask, and that gravely concerns me. And I just, I'm just not sure why we're not waiting, you, you said, like, we could be in the green in a couple of weeks, like, why are we not just waiting? I mean, there are other reasons to wait as well, like, the fact that we can't vaccinate our younger children, but I just, we've been in this moderate level for a couple of weeks now, and it just seems awfully rushed, when we've been so vigilant for the last two years, that it just, I don't understand the rush right now, and that's all.
Charles McFadden, I live on Harvard Avenue. So, we've heard the parents in Oakland speak out about masks. They said their children are having headaches and getting eczema from masking. These children are being forced to wear masks in order to come to school. Who is held liable if a student passes out from lack of oxygen while wearing a mask indoors during PE or even in class? What about children with speech problems? This is actually, I've heard this, with teachers. Teachers need to see their mouths, and students need to see their teachers' mouths. Who is responsible for this learning delay? What about the emotional damage that these children have from this, and the adults? Children don't understand what it, what depression and anxiety are, but I bet a lot of them feel depressed and anxious because of these mandates, and that, in fact, I see kids who don't have a mask on, and they go like, they go like this, and they walk down the hallway scared, because they're covering their faces, it's okay, buddy, you can, you could, we'll get you a mask, it's okay. They're literally in fear, because they're holding their, you know, they're afraid, or doing this, you know? These kids are, they're affected by this, whether you believe it or not, kids, they say, kids are resilient. I, you know, I don't think kids are all that resilient, I think kids put up with things, but they're not necessarily resilient, but that's my opinion. So, damages have occurred, and long-term consequences of these mandates will be seen and felt for years to come. So, why are we, also, why are we only testing on asymptomatic, unvaccinated staff and students in this school district? Asymptomatic vaccinated people are becoming sick and spreading the virus, just like the unvaccinated, this is discrimination. When the emergency power ends, and if the board decides to extend the mask mandate and testing in the future, will you, the Collingswood Board, be held liable for injuries and discrimination? I'm just asking, I'm just curious if you would answer, because we really don't know, like, how, how, when it ends, how, how do we know, who will be held responsible for this? Like, will the governor still be held responsible, or, you know what I'm saying, if someone, if someone literally fell down and hit their head on the ground during PE, does it come back to you guys if the, if the mandate is finished? So, and also, who in the school district has the authority to enforce medical mandates, like masking and testing, after the emergency powers have come to an end? So, that, that's kind of what I want to know, is like, who has the power to continue this? We've done this, I, I didn't want to do this for a while, like, you know, we, everyone has different opinions, and we've played the game, you know, it's always like, you know, we're the bad guys, I'm the bad guy, I know, I'm the bad guy, right? So, you know, we did this for a long time, and now it's coming to an end, and now we're, oh, wait a second, hold on, hold on. So, I'm, I'm sincere in asking, when the governor says it's over, where's the power coming from? Like, where, legally, who has the power to say that we can, we have to continue to do these things? And you mentioned, some schools will not let unvacc students play sports or extracurricular activities. How do they know, like, the people putting these programs together, how do they know the status of the students? This is their private, private medical information, I would think, right? Like, that, that to me concerns, it concerns me, because, you know, is nothing private anymore? And when is this, when is the emergency ending? I'm not sure if we have an answer, or, or will it be posted somewhere? No.
All right, well, thank you. Dan Smith, 225 Lincoln Avenue, I'm going to use this mic while it's still a tall guy height. The New Jersey Department of Health, on February 22nd, promulgated guidelines that suggest that each Board of Education's decision on universal masking should be specifically dependent upon the school's ability to maintain cohorting, physical distancing, contact tracing, proper ventilation, and COVID test screenings, as well as looking at schools' vaccination rates. We, as parents, should know what the board's assessment is on each of these factors. I thought if we were going to be going to be announcing an end to mask mandates, we'd at least be hearing about measures being put in place or continued in order to protect against widespread outbreaks. Instead, the email on Friday advertised less surveillance testing and less notifications of positive cases for families. I realize that positive rates in the region are at moderate, but still, people with children under five are not able to use the vaccine, and the immunocompromised don't get full protection from the vaccine. We all have opinions about when the mask should come off, we all know they're going to come off, we all have opinions about when that should be. It's an individualized thing, it's based on our experiences and our perspectives. Would I be as empathetic about the immunocompromised if I didn't have cancer nine years ago? Maybe not. Would I be as concerned about families with kids under five if I didn't almost lose my son to a different respiratory virus when he was six months old? Maybe not. We all have strong opinions, and for the past two years, they've been clashing against each other, constantly, publicly, harshly, grotesquely. Our community is never going to agree on the mask issue. The politicians took off with it. The culture war took off with it. That ship has sailed, but there are so many things that we, as a community, could unite and get equally energized about. Like, can we all agree that smaller class sizes would be better? Could we get together and approve that? Can we agree that kids have missed out on a lot for the last two years? Can we work together and create opportunities this summer to make up for that? With funding, with volunteerism? We've seen a lot of lemons in these public comments and social media for the past two years, and part of me, the optimistic part of me, still thinks that we can somehow turn all those lemons into rudimentary lemonade. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Logue, I live on 227 Richie Avenue. I just wanted to come up here real quick and just tell you thank you for finally making it optional. I have two children, seven and five, my five-year-old is autistic, he just started talking, literally just this year. I really shouldn't be saying this part, but the teacher has been taking, you know, pulling her mask down in order for my child to see the words and learn how to be verbally communicate, to better communicate with people. That's why I'm just coming up here, and just, once again, just saying thank you for taking the time to make it somewhat optional or considering it, because I'm really hoping that once the masks become optional, my kid will be able to start speaking more, and hopefully, his education will also start getting better. Thank you for your time.
I just felt the need to come up and say that I am happy to hear that our leadership team is suggesting masks optional to the board. I support your recommendation and hope we move forward in finalizing the mask optional policy. We're not ending the masks, we're making them optional. I also understand that preschool falls under a separate category of guidelines, so I was disappointed to learn that pre-K students were not eligible for the test-to-stay program, especially when they are asymptomatic and unvacc, so they do qualify in some way. But I was happy to hear tonight, Dr. McDowell, you stating that you are advocating for this, and that you have another meeting coming up about this. Hopefully, we can expect or even challenge some change for this, as my family and I have been extremely impacted by the long quarantine exposure times, resulting in unhealthy inconsistency for my preschooler, as well as many unpaid workdays for myself. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Nicole McKenna, I'm at Browning Road in Collingswood. I have three elementary students at Newbie Elementary School, and I guess that I do, would like to say that I, I support the recommendation of going mask optional, you know, and, and I know that people, I don't, just for clarification, that, that means that you can still wear a mask, your children, you can still send your children to school in masks? Yes. Because I, I know my children have, have expressed to me that they do not want to wear their mask. They're done with them, and they're tired of them, and they don't want to wear them. But they also, I take them out public places, and they see that some people choose to wear a mask, and some people choose not to. So, I think that's a great way to make it understandable for kids. I do have a question about the test-to-stay. Somebody mentioned the hardship of trying to schedule testing for your kids, like, trying to get an appointment or go to a testing site and get that done, if you're a working parent. So, I wonder if you would consider making use of home tests? And I, it did say on your email that the test had to be administered by medical practitioners, but I wonder if the children would be able to bring a home test to school and have the school nurses administer the test there? Just a, just an option, maybe? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marion Nolan, I live at 208 Park Avenue. I have two kids at Newbie in kindergarten and second grade. There's going to be no way to please everyone, and, you know, I've been back and forth on, on both sides for a long time. What I can say is that when we, last year, when we were remote, and when we went back for hybrid, you know, we justified it by saying that we followed the trends, and that's what I'm hearing tonight. We're going to follow the trends to say, we can make masks optional, because things are a little bit safer. I hear everyone's concerns, as far as, you know, personal reasons and, and health concerns. For me, my concern is the emotional toll that it's taking on our kids, specifically my eight-year-old daughter. You know, there's not much I can, I can change, there's not much I can, I can do to take back the time that she lost that would have been a, a normal school experience for her, but I can say that, you know, we're talking about the long-term effects, we don't know what that would be on our kids either. She went from happy kid who loved school to, she can't sleep at night, and she doesn't want to get out of bed, and she's eight. So, for her, I'd like to see things go back, or at least have the option, for kids like her, to be a little bit more comfortable in school, to see her, her teacher's face, to see the, the faces of her peers, and get some of that normalcy for her emotional well-being back. And, that's it, thank you.
Daniella Kraken, 316 Harvard Ave. I just want to say that I support the mask optional suggestion. Thank you for thinking of our children's mental health, it's so important, and I know that Oakland went optional, just to avoid confusion, I think we should do the same. That's all, thank you.
Hi, my name is Donna Helms, I live at 21 East Narberth Terrace. I first want to thank all of you very much for all the time that you're taking, everything that the teachers are doing, I see some of my Newbie teachers, and I just thank you so much, these last two years have been so hard, and the fact that you, as parents and community members, take your time to, to listen to us and to make these really hard decisions, my hat's off to you, and I really appreciate it. I don't want to get into the binary of masks, no masks, I want to point out, I have a lot of family in South Korea and Japan, and kids there have been masking for many years, they are not suffering academically as countries, nor are they suffering through mental health. I wonder about getting past the binary of no mask, mask, and looking for creative, low-cost but impactful solutions. For example, you know, my heart breaks listening to parents whose kids have autism, a woman who adopted kids from Haiti. In New York, where I'm from, special ed teachers wear clear masks, and kids in special education classes have clear masks. That's something, as a grant writer, I'm really happy to volunteer my time, if there's a program, to get clear masks. Also, I wonder about ventilation as we move forward, this is a new age, there are low-cost things like Cory Rosenthal boxes that you can make in science class that have been proven... that have been proven to really help reduce virus load in the air, opening windows, outside lunches, outside classes. Again, if parents could volunteer, if that's, you know, staff-wise, if you need help, I'm happy to help with that. So that's what I want, I'm trying to think past is how we can move forward with this, because it is a new day and age, and I think if we can be creative to help keep everyone as safe as possible, that's something you guys have shown me all along that you want to do, and I want to thank you again for everything that you do.[634.66][634.66][applause]
Good evening. My name is Amy Marzalino. I live at 1103 Stokes Avenue. I have nothing prepared. I was actually moved by watching online and decided to come down because I felt really concerned about the fact that things were, this concept of masks, no masks, seemed very black and white to me. As a public health worker and some licensed social worker, I feel like there are a lot of opportunities for us to meet the people who have particular needs in the middle. I don't think this needs to be a black and white issue. I have two children in the school district, both of whom are autists, one of whom is having surgery on Thursday and is immunocompromised. And this removing masks will make a difference about whether or not he can return to school after his surgery. I would like to think that we can think outside of the box and create opportunities for these children to access their education. I don't want to see other children who don't have those limitations not experience school in the way that they deserve. But I think there's a real opportunity here to, you know, boost up vaccination rates. Thirty percent, I was shocked, honestly, thirty percent for our school district. You know, I don't have a pre-K kid. I have kids who are vaccinated, I feel privileged to have them receive them. I'm concerned for parents who don't have that accessibility, but I'm also concerned for my children who have special needs and are going to be affected by being more at risk by removing masks. So I hope that we can come together. I don't want to see kids limited by, you know, I don't want to see them emotionally and socially limited by wearing masks. I want them all to have the same opportunities, but we really have to start thinking about how to meet each of these kids where they're at, keep them safe, if they have special needs, if they need accommodations, and not just think mask or no mask. That, to me, does not really, that, to me, doesn't seem to be thinking intelligently about what our children need.
Hi, I'm Ed Bites from 617 Lee's Avenue. I just want to say, for whatever it matters, I'm happy to see that we're moving to optional, and I want to thank the district for doing that. Looking past the mask issue, and frankly, more important to me than keeping them on or taking them off, is improving the academic resources that are there to help make up for the detriment that our children suffered during the remote period. One of those, and this only occurred to us today while reviewing the agenda, that there is a, some kind of combined kickball and math program that's coming up for approval at Zane, that is, I understand, not Zane, I'm sorry, Newby, as I understand it, that's being funded with S R two funds, which I had to read about today, even know what that My wife is on the PTA at Zane, there's like four, basically a four-person PTA that are responsible for almost every extracurricular activity there. They had no idea what it was. There has not been any communication, at least at Zane, about how to request programming like this, whether it's before school, after school. We did a little bit more research on it. We saw that Haddonfield is having, with this funding from the, this is all part of the CARES Act, for anyone who doesn't know what I'm talking about, there's a after-school junior engineers program for second graders and third graders that's being funded through this. So I understand people here at Haddonfield, they think they probably have more money. As I understand it, this is state, this is grant money that's been approved for this kind of programming, and there's been, as far as we know, no discussion of it whatsoever through Zane. So I know this isn't an opportunity to respond, but just something for consideration going forward, if we can get word out to parents at the various elementary schools, that's my interest at this point, to like, what programming options are there? How do we request it? If the teachers, if it's not something they can take on because of it being after school, before school, find out like, can parent, you know, I'd coach a kickball math team, I don't know what it is, but we, you know, I'd figure it out. In any event, that's it. There can just be some communication about what to do with this funding, because like Mr. Smith said, one of the things we probably can all agree on is, our kids lost some stuff over the past two years, it'd be nice to figure out a way to get them caught back up.
So I was at home too, and I was watching the livestream, so now I'm here. I am, I live at 460 Center Street, my kids go to Tatum. I'm also a substitute in the district. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, Lori Kerfrin. So in the last month or so, I've subbed at three different places in town, plus my kids go to Tatum. So I've had a lot of time with a lot of different kids of a lot of different ages. First thing I want to say is that in every school I've been in, the teachers, the principals, the staff are extremely loving with the kids. I've never seen anyone treat children unkindly about their masking. I've never seen anyone make kids feel bad about the type of mask they're wearing. The kids don't seem to even see the masks on each other. They're really interacting with one another, and they are given tons of breaks to get water. If kids need mask breaks, we, like, that's always something that can be accommodated. There's no children passing out in class wearing their masks, I can promise you that. The classrooms are well-ventilated, they're temperature-controlled. The kids are not suffering, they're learning, they're beautiful. We have a beautiful district of kids, and I, it's been a beautiful experience getting to know all of them. I will say that when the email came out on Friday, for me, I not only feel anxiety for my children, but also feel anxiety as a substitute going into the schools, knowing that the likelihood of me becoming infected goes up a lot. And so when I'm factoring my own kids' risks and then my risks, it does make it harder for me to make the decision to support our staff, which I don't want to feel that way. I love going into the schools. Every school I've been at, the teachers say, "We never get subs." So I want to be that person, I want to be able to be there for our staff and support them, but being safe in that environment as safe as possible is really important to me. I have a mom who's immunocompromised, I have a niece who is 20 months old. We see them regularly. We are unbelievably restricted in our social behaviors because we're caring for them and they are in our lives, and that's a huge factor to me. I love this district, I think all the children in this district are incredible, it has been wonderful working here, even more so than just being a parent. Like, I've really loved seeing how the schools function and all the different kids bring so many different things to the table, but I've never heard any of those kids say, "But if only I could take this mask off." That's not something I've heard any child say to me. No child has complained to me about their mask at school. When they're at school, they're reading, they're writing, they're doing their math, they're socializing, they have friends. Most of my time in the classroom is getting kids not to chat the whole time. They're happy, they're functioning. So I just want to say, as somebody who's working with these kids and being in there as a stranger even, I'm seeing really vibrant children. So I feel really sad for parents who are dealing with kids who are having a hard time, and I'm not discounting that, but I'm saying the picture I've seen in four different spaces is like really vibrant, beautiful children. So I just want you guys to think about, this is not a gloom and doom scenario, right? We're trying to protect the weakest among us, right? The sickest among us, the people who have immunocompromised family, our staff members who can get sick. As it is, we have no staff. There are absences that are like through the roof. So the more staff that gets sick, the more administration that gets sick, the harder it is to keep the schools running, and that's what we all want. As a parent, I want my kids in school, I think everybody else wants their kids at school, remote learning was like the worst. I don't want my kids going back to that. So if wearing a mask keeps my kids in school with their teachers, that is what I would like us to focus on. They're in school, they're not on a computer, isolated in their rooms. So that's just what I wanted to say. Please, please consider deeply, not only the students, also the staff, and not just the parents. Go see the kids in their classrooms as the board. See if you feel like they're suffering, or if you see vibrant, beautiful children learning. It's just a mask. It is just a mask.
Hi, May Kramer. I live at West Narberth Terrace, and I have an eight-year-old son at Newby and a four-year-old daughter in the Sharp Pre-K Program. Thank you for this, I know that this has not been easy, and I'm so grateful for the entire Collingswood School District and everyone that is working to keep everybody safe. Very similar to what's been echoed around, you know, the inability for four-year-olds and under, five-year-olds and under to get access to the vaccine. This decision seems exceptionally scary. I was very hopeful with the numbers that we're seeing, shifting down to moderate, continue to be hopeful that we are in the right direction, but I don't feel like we're there yet, and clearly there's a lot of people in agreement. On the heels of, you know, having vaccines continue to get delayed for this population, for those of us that are feeling like that that would be a safeguard that's meaningful, the news is continually scary. And so Friday, when that district email came out, the idea of losing masks just temporarily, I mean, you know, I want us to have no masks just as much, we all do, but the idea of dropping masks and then seeing in addition to that, all the other things that were going to go away, was really hard to read. It was very, very hard to read as folks that have been really safe and have lost people. And my child that has no access to the vaccine has fever seizures, so this entire thing has been super terrifying for a lot of families. So I would just ask that, you know, considering the population that cannot get vaccinated yet, hopefully we're super close, I think everybody wants to lose masks and continue to stay in the right direction, perhaps we push a little longer. At the very least, dropping all of the other safeguards at once seems particularly risky and, you know, very hard to read, you know, in a district communication. So thanks again, know it's not easy.
So before we move on to Section Eight, the Superintendent's Report, we just wanted to give a quick clarifying statement on a few things.
So just a couple of things. The decisions and the recommendations have not come out of community pressure, they have not come based on partisan politics, they have come under much deliberation over many weeks with a culmination of intense data review, guidance, and then decision-making based on what our local needs were. So just, so for the record, mask optional does not mean masks are going away. What it means is, is that families have the choice about whether to wear or not wear a mask. Same thing goes for staff. One of the speakers commented about vaccination rates. Currently, of eligible students, it is 55%, not 30% of children that are vaccinated. And staff, it is 86.5%, which is a really high percentage rate, and we're seeing continued increases. When you break that down in, between elementary and secondary, secondary rates, specifically our children of the middle and the high school age, who have characteristics and behaviors more like adults, they are approaching 65%, which is above the national average. As it relates to the other protocols, we are still contact tracing, we are still keeping students in small cohorts, we are still practicing social distancing to the greatest extent possible, we are still conducting continued hand washing. In addition to making sure that hand sanitizer is readily available, we are still disinfecting classrooms on a regular basis, in addition to high-touch areas. We have the highest-rated air filters for the systems that we have within our schools, but please keep in mind that our buildings, the youngest building in our catalog is 60 years old, so we are, we've made significant investments in making sure that we have sufficient airflow, making sure that we are regularly changing the filters, making sure that we are doing routine cleaning, making sure that we are continuing social distancing to the greatest extent possible, making sure that we are not mixing cohorts of children for contact tracing in order to be able to reduce the level of risk. The mask optional is supported by an extensive dataset that shows that the level of risk in that particular environment, based on a myriad of factors, which includes the mitigation strategies that we're using, in addition to vaccination rates within not just our county, but also our region, it is justified. So we're not making this decision in order to negatively impact families. We will continue to look at the information, we'll continue to calibrate and collaborate with our local health departments, and if we need to pivot, we will make the necessary adjustments. But right now, all of the data is pointing that the continued trend is dramatically shifting. If you look nationally, COVID rates are down 96% from where they were six weeks ago. So we're definitely moving in a much better space. That does not mean that there will not be another wave that comes back, and when, and if that is the case, we will make the necessary shifts in order to protect our students and our staff. I just wanted to make sure that I'm clarifying that we are not abandoning all of the mitigation strategies, we are evolving our practices as the trends and the data suggests. We know that it's scary. I have a one-year-old and a five-year-old. My daughter goes to the preschool, she is one of those children that has also been affected on numerous occasions. My mother is immunocompromised, so we completely understand and acknowledge that every family is in a different place. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to balance what makes the most sense for our school community based on the data and the information and the tools that we have at our disposal.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. We're moving on to Section Eight, the Superintendent's Report, so you get to take the mic again.
Section 8.01 is the enrollment report. January 2021, we were 2215, January of 22, 2254, and the five-year and the monthly reports are attached. 8.02 is the school safety drill report, that is also attached for January. 8.03 contains the suspension report for the month of January, and 8.04 contains the January anti-bullying report as presented.
Thank you, and I did want to just say thank you to everyone who took the time to come this evening to share their thoughts and their concerns with us. Section nine already happened, so moving on to Section 10, the Business Administrator Board Secretary Report, Ms. Coleman.
Thank you. Tonight, I have the January 2022 Report of Monthly Transfers, the Secretary Treasuries Report, Cash Reports, Student Activity Cash Report in 10.03. In 10.04, I did not get the Food Service Financial Statement on time, so we don't have to vote on that because there is nothing attached to the board agenda. And 10.05, I have a listing of the February purchase orders that have been issued, and in 10.06 is a list of the payments to be issued tomorrow.
Thank you. Moving on to Section 11, the Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee Report, Mr. Craig.
Thank you. The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers. No and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. Starting out is approval of the Board Secretaries' Report from 1102 to 1109, skipping 1107, which was the Food Service Financials. 1110 is approving rates for Therapy Source Incorporated. Provide services on an as-needed basis to help with making sure that we're getting students that need special services access to those services. 1111 is a donation of a Ender 3D printer and filament from Kyle and Francis Chang to the Zane North School. Sounds like a pretty cool donation. Excited to see what kids are able to do with that. 1112 is requests for proposals that come around this time, where the Board of Education, we go out to look for services such as architect, auditor, medical services, nursing services, physical therapy services, solicitor, and transportation nurse. 1113, we are approving the tuition rates for the following school year, which are listed. 1114 is approving the use of the middle school auditorium and cafeteria for rehearsals for the Collingswood Youth Theater. This will be running through April with performances on April 20, performances on Friday, April 29th, and Saturday, April 30th. Doesn't say here, but I'm sure if you check their website, you'll be able to find out more information about getting tickets to that. 1115 is approving the donation of two picnic tables from Corey Ruse to Garfield School, sadly from McCona. And that is it. So seeking approval of 1102 to 1115.
Right, so approval of 1102 to 1115 minus 11.07, correct? That'd be the way we'd say it? All right. So do we have a motion to approve those items? And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please. Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman? And Mrs. Caden? Yes. Moving on to Section 12, the Curriculum Committee. Ms. Henry.
The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction, co-curricular programs, and the school calendar. Items 12.02 through 12.04 are elementary, middle, and high school field trips, which there's none at this time. Item 12.05 is an approval of an overnight high school field trip. Item 12.06 and 12.07 are out-of-district and home instruction placements. And item 12.08 is a request for a senior privilege, for a senior student to complete their high school career here. And 12.09 seeks approval for two delayed openings at the high school only for March 14th through 18th for NJGPA testing. And we're seeking approval of items 12.02 through 12.09 at this time.
Do I have a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
And a second? Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please. Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera? Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk where I abstain.
Mr. Bowman? And Mrs. Caden? Yes. Moving on to Section 13, the Personnel Committee. I will be presenting in place of Ms. Sheridan Celia. So the Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. 13.02 is a resignation. 13.03 is a rescinded contract. 13.04 is an NJFLA approving a leave. 13.05 is the hiring of Dr. Michael Ostroff as the high school principal, beginning May 1st, or sooner if possible. 13.06 to 13.10 are all transfers. 13.11 and 13.12 are revised contracts, as is 13.13. 13.14 is a paid leave. 13.15 is a list of psychology interns. 13.16 are, is the hiring of another remote learning teacher. 13.17 is for SAP, which is, refresh my memory, what SAP stands for again?
School Acceleration Program.
Thank you. School Acceleration Program Staffing at Newby. 13.18 is after-school district-wide book read and executive function school acceleration plan. Also, I believe at, or no, maybe that is district-wide. And 13.19 is approving some teachers that will be participating in the school acceleration programs. And 13.20 is instructional assistants participating in the school acceleration programs. 13.21 is a course overload for the 2021-2022 school year. 13.22 are the certified teacher lunch supervisors, two for Mark Newby. 13.23 are the 2021-2022 Buildings and Grounds part-time custodian. 13.24 is, there's two, putting into place two more high school staff PLC leaders. 13.25 is the use of CST interpreting services for the child study team. 13.26 are some winter athletic event personnel. 13.27 are middle school spring athletic stipends. 13.28 are winter athletic event personnel students. 13.29 are the spring athletic coaches. And 13.30 is the Superintendent's Evaluation from last year. 13.31, supervisors, substitutes, and tutors. And 13.32 is the travel expense form. Chris has a tough job. So looking for approval tonight for items 13.02 to 13.32, do I have a motion to approve? After. Yep. Motion to approve? Second? And then questions or comments from board members? Syria. It was an oversight that it did not happen in the end-of-June meeting. And for CUSAC, we need to make sure it is in there, so it was, it was an administrative mistake that it didn't happen earlier. But it was reviewed with, with Dr. McDowell and all of that. We just didn't put it on the agenda. Any other questions or comments?
Just real quick, we're kind of fortunate in the district that we don't have new school leaders coming in all the time. And I just think it would be nice if you could just share a little bit about Dr. Ostroff as he's coming in to lead the high school.
So it's, well, first, it's important to talk about the process. So we posted the position for the high school being vacated by Mr. Jenna, who will be assuming leadership at Zane North. Thirty-six applicants applied for the position. We then paper-screened or reviewed resumes, qualifications, references, and invited 16 to participate in a performance-based assessment. Of that, four declined. Twelve participated in the performance-based assessment. We then, so we screened them over an extended period of time with our full leadership team. They went through a series of three activities in order for us to be able to identify, did they have not just the paper qualifications, but the requisite skills for the role. Of that, five of those 12 rows to the top, which we then invited for a series of face-to-face interviews at the high school. Three of the groups were parents. One of the groups were teachers, and one of the groups were administrators. So each of those five went through five different interviews throughout the course of about a two-and-a-half-hour period. Feedback was provided on strengths and challenges of each. We then whittled that down to four individuals that we then invited to participate in a community forum. And then from that community forum, each of those candidates were required to talk about their leadership, talk about their vision for CHS, and then field questions from the community. From that, two candidates rose to the top, one being Dr. Ostroff and one being another candidate. They were then invited for another follow-up interview with the district, senior district leadership team, where each candidate was required to go into full detail of a major initiative that they had personally led. They had to talk us through their process and then field questions from myself, my two assistant superintendents, and our director of special services. And then, so we reviewed all of that data, and we landed on Dr. Ostroff, who comes to us from Pens Grove with extensive curriculum and instruction experience. He also has an extensive background as a district safety specialist and high school teaching experience. Some of his levels of expertise are really around not just culture and climate, but also rigorous academics, specifically an early college model. What that provides is an opportunity for students to take advanced courses, receive college credit, that then ultimately shaves the tremendous cost of college off for many of our families. So that was one of the things that he talked about that he led in Pens Grove above and beyond some of the other characteristics. So he comes to us with two decades of experience, K through 12 curriculum knowledge. And we're extremely excited for him to join our team and to help take our high school to the next level.
Thank you. Could you also explain a little bit about the school acceleration programs and why we saw on the agenda some schools having some and others not, and what we might see in the future with that?
Right. So it's an ongoing process. So we allocated pretty substantial funds to schools, and we asked for each school to put forward proposals for potential programs that they would like to run at their schools based on the needs of their students. We received 13 applications, and we approved 13 of those applications to be able to move forward. So each school submitted something different. So for example, at the secondary campus in Esports League, at one of our elementary campuses, you heard about a math-focused kickball club. There's going to be reading groups. There's going to be a group focused on social-emotional learning. So what I would encourage families to do is to reach out to their school to see which programs are available to them if they have not already been contacted for participation by their school leadership team. We're going to continue to push schools to take advantage of this resource. We still have funds that are available, so we're going to ask for another round of proposals to be able to come forward, but so far we've received 13. And we're also planning for targeted levels of support for robust summer programming, but that has not started yet.
Does that mirror the summer programming from this, because I know that was paid through SIR CARES funding, the summer program last year. So I know that's, as everybody's thinking about what they're going to start doing with their kids through the summer, do we anticipate having that program again?
Yes, we want to. So we, we had roughly 261 students participate in our summer programming above and beyond extended school year for our special needs students. We are planning for substantially more, because based on the feedback, we think that demand will be much higher. So we will post or after the budget process, which right now is all-encompassing, we will be shifting our focus to planning for summer. But we're going to continue to push our schools to take advantage of the funds that we have earmarked for learning acceleration and extracurricular activities to get us to June 30th. So we're gonna, we're gonna do another round.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please. Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except those marked with a double asterisk where I abstain.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Caden? Yes. Moving on to Section 14, the Policy Committee. Ms. Severino.
The Policy and Regulations Committee reviews all updates and changes of district policies and regulations. So the policies we have to review tonight are, these are just a first reading, so they will all be going through a second reading, so any revisions or changes can be made to them. We have 2415.05, student surveys, analysis, evaluations, examinations, testing, or treatment. 2431.4, that is the prevention and treatment of sports-related concussions and head injuries. Okay. Just one note on that. We had an additional note that was shared with us by a staff member. So I just would ask that when you are looking at the policy, that you keep that note in mind. Policy 2622, student assessment. Policy 3233, political activities. Policy 5541 is the only new policy, and it is an anti-hazing policy. And the anti-hazing policy that was shared with us applies to elementary schools and indicates board of ed members, school employees, and contracted service providers as mandated reporters. Policy 7540, joint use of facilities. Policy 8465, bias crimes and bias-related acts. And policy 9560, administration of school surveys. And there are no regulations at this time.
So just to double-check, Beth, there's nothing to vote on this month because they're all first reads, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right. Moving on, moving on from that to Section 15, miscellaneous. We have the, the HIB report from the month of January. And the report includes both potential and confirmed instances of bullying and includes the outcome of each investigation. We have 15.02 is the revised Safe Return to School Plan. And just kind of for clarifying purposes, this is really us, us as a board saying that we are in agreement with the, the protocols that Dr. McDowell and the administration laid out and we discussed earlier today. So that, that is everything. So we need approval of items 15.01 to 15.02. Do I have a motion? And a second? Questions or comments from board members?
I think I have a question. Want to make sure what I'm saying is true. So we're moving on the, the protocols that are used to determine the policy and the implementation of the policy starting March 7th, or the process that you're putting in place to figure out the policies. Does that, does this make sense?
I think so. I believe that what, what we are voting on is the process that has been created to follow the, we already, we're not voting on a policy because that already exists. We have a masking policy in place. So all we are voting on is the revision or amendments, I guess, to the Safe Return to School Plan that includes what happens when we move to moderate status and we follow the guidelines that we talked about earlier.
And timing for implementation of that is included in that.
Sorry, say that again?
And timing for the, for the move is included in that.
Right.
You're asking to move on. Thank you.
Right. Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please. Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
I abstain.
Ms. Rivera? Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman? Mrs. Caden? Yes. Moving on to Section 16, this is our second opportunity for public comment. Please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and
The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. We will be listening and taking notes, and if any further communication is needed, you can look for that later in the week or during our next committee meetings.
Mrs. Caden, I'm sorry, can I ask a question? Are we not going to approve as first reading those policies that were listed?
I think we, we take a roll call in a second, then it becomes a policy.
If it becomes a policy in a second, yes, but I, I think we have to approve the first reading.
We can do that, whatever, I mean, they won't be a policy until, as a, until second.
Yeah, correct.
We would, we would only be, we're backing up to section fourteen for a minute. We're approving item fourteen point oh-two, which is simply the first read of the policies. These policies are not going into place yet. Do I have a motion to approve the first reading of those policies?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments from board members?
I have a question, actually.
Good.
Considering that we had one abstain and one no, and two missing board members, are we covered with moving forward based on who is here to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a quorum.
We have six.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, oh, no, roll call, please.
Six yeses. All right, let me, whatever. Sorry.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
And Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Now, moving to section sixteen, public participation. I'm not going to reread it, everybody just heard me. If you'd like to make a comment, come on up.
Hi again. Summer O'Gradyne, 348 Hadon Avenue. I'm going to hand out to you now a list of research-supported benefits of active outdoor playtime for preschoolers with references as well as New Jersey Department of Health Guidelines and New Jersey Department of Ed requirements for state-funded preschools. Please take one and pass. There are two. There are two. My youngest attends the preschool Penguin, Penguin Church location. Regarding the recent email we received on Friday, it is upsetting to hear the playground plan is on hold due to zoning restrictions. Parents were addressed about the play space on day one of school and that it would be arriving shortly. Then we have not heard anything again until this past Friday. I have sent two emails to you, Dr. McDowell, asking for an update stating my husband and I would be more than happy to assist with anything that we possibly could to move the plan forward, but never gotten a response. I have also sent several emails throughout the school year to the preschool and have received replies back, but always stating the plan was moving forward, that fencing has been purchased, that building and grounds were waiting and ready to go as soon as the equipment arrived. This obviously never happened. So much information was missing. While I was happy to read that the school intends to continue recess in the gym, I am not happy to hear this will be taking the place of active outdoor play. And while it's been indicated that other outdoor activities will take place, like story time and circle time, which both are great enrichment activities, this does not substitute active outdoor play. This cannot be the solution until we wait for a new playground location to be approved. In the meantime, we need to come up with a temporary plan that still allows active outdoor play to happen. The New Jersey Department of Ed states the outdoor play requirements for preschool children must have access to a developmentally appropriate playground for at least forty-five minutes daily. I assume everyone here tonight already understands the supported benefits and the importance of a safe outdoor play space for preschool-aged children, considering it is a recommended guidance of the New Jersey Department of Health, American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC, the American Public Health Association, the National Resource Center for Health and Safety in Child Care and Early Ed, and the Niemer's Child Care Wellness Policy Workbook, to name a few. Preschoolers especially struggle with emotional regulation, and getting outside help can help tremendously. Since social, emotional, and mental wellness is a focus for our district this year, I find it hard to believe this has been an oversight. Not only is this unfortunate, it is a requirement, and it has now been seventeen months that you have not met this requirement since we obtained the building. With the recent issues, the lack of transparency being shown, is setting an example that the parents will be excluded from working with the district to resolve some of these issues. This gives me the impression that there is no plan in place for a new playground location, and that the parent input was never going to be taken into consideration. This district has an enormous group of parents that have a strong willingness to participate and assist if called upon, and it feels like we are being ignored. I feel you need to explore and come up with an interim plan so our kids can get active outside play now. We understand there are hurdles, but our community can work together to overcome them. During this time of COVID, parents have been asked to be extremely flexible, to live outside of the box to what is normal. And I think we can come up with a solution, some kind of solution, outside the box for our kids to have access to a safe, active, outdoor play space. Thank you.
Kim DeShays, 528 Lincoln Ave., Apartment A. I'm here to also talk about the lack of an active outdoor play space for the Collingswood Early Childhood Center preschool location, which has rendered it out of compliance with state funding requirements, and the lack of transparency from the administration related to this matter. This is the second year at this location. On the first day of school this year, September 8th, Jen Floyd announced that a playground was planned for the former volleyball court next to the church on Park Ave., and that the equipment was on the way but delayed because of COVID. There has been no further parent-wide communication from the administration on the matter until this past Friday, February 25th, after being inundated with questions and concerns from parents as to why the children are no longer playing outside. The letter sent at 3:30 PM on Friday informed parents that the playground project is on hold as they work with the church to find an alternate location. In the same letter, it was announced that the active outdoor play space they had been utilizing in front of the school had been deemed unsafe, and so they had decided on a new plan for indoor recess. This decision was made on February 17th and went into effect on February 22nd without any parental notification or input. The lack of communication in this situation has created distrust among the parents and rumors abound. This needs to be addressed if we, as a district, are sincere in our goal of timely, open communication and elaborate, and collaboration with a focus on parental empowerment and partnership to solve problems. Since there will be no playground on-site for the foreseeable future, and the available outdoor space has been deemed unsafe, I propose this temporary solution. Walk the children one block down Stokes Ave. to the large fenced-in play yard at Zane North. I'm sure it would take some adjusting and coordinating of schedules and shared space, and maybe some creative use of staff and enlisting parent volunteers. I volunteer. But this would give our kids the same opportunity for active outdoor recess as the other preschoolers in the district are afforded, and is not only a more equitable solution than the one currently enacted, but is also in compliance with public health guidelines and Department of Education requirements for state-funded preschool programs. I encourage you to review the information Ms. O'Gradyne handed out regarding the research-supported benefits of active outdoor playtime for children if you aren't convinced that indoor recess in a room with no windows isn't an acceptable alternative. It should also be noted that the Just Kids program that provides wraparound care for Collingswood Early Childhood Center students up to three-and-a-half hours per day provides zero outdoor time of any kind due to the lack of a safe outdoor play space. Yes, this means that some of our preschool students are in the building for nine-and-a-half hours a day with no active outdoor playtime. Based on the commitments that led to your election, I know that this board values clear, intentional communication with families, and is committed to educational equity in our schools. I hope that you consider the issues I presented here today and take action to best support our students and the goals we have set as a district. Thank you for your time and attention.
I have a really quick question. I know that you said that the summer programming is still very in the early stages, you haven't actually even begun to plan it yet. I was just curious whether it's going, i- in a perfect world, would it look the same as it did last year where it's going to be taking place in August? And secondly, would it look the same where only certain grades are going to have those programs and other grades are not going to have those programs? Thank you.
So, Dan, we're, we're looking at the, all of those, all of those variables. Based on the need, we know that we need to expand. We're going to look and, and see how can we get the greatest benefit to the largest number of children.
Hi, Nicole McKenna, 135 East Browning Road, Collingswood. So, I just want to say that I thought that the purpose of speaking, the community speaking at these meetings is to inform the board about issues that we have questions about or that we need, we want to be addressed. And I've spoke at previous meetings. I've also sent emails to Dr. McDowell and to each of the board members, and I've not yet received one response. Not one response. The information I'm asking for should be public knowledge. Where can I view the elementary curriculum? How are we planning to change the curriculum in response to the setback of COVID and remote instruction? Where is the detailed information regarding policies and procedures used to identify students as gifted and talented, and the continuum of services offered to gifted and talented students, which should be available on the district website? I just don't understand how else to get these question, these questions answered, because you say, go through the right channels of doing so, and I come and I ask, and I send emails to the people in charge of these things, and I don't get any responses back.
So, there, oh. I thought you were done. No, go ahead, finish your.
No, I just, I really, I also wanted to ask about when we're going to be getting back field trips, and also why there's no trip for the eighth graders this year. I know there's a senior trip. We have these funds, there's just nothing planned, and I don't know when we're going to get back into, to allocating those funds towards those goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. I would say, I do believe an email may have come to the board, and that was an oversight, not to have responded, so I do apologize for that. But for some of the specific questions, where the board is, is not in charge of, of putting that curriculum on, on the website or things like that. The Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum would probably be the person to, to go to to ask a lot of those questions, and certainly any questions specific to schools about field trips or things like that would be to, to the individual school. They would have those answers for you faster than we would as a board. So, I appreciate you, you bringing up the fact that we need to make sure that we are communicating back with you when, when you have come to speak.
No, I appreciate that, too, because if I'm not going to the correct people, it
would be at least, you know, appropriate to get a response of who I should be fielding these questions to. And it's been, I feel like, months that I've been asking the same questions and getting no responses back. Thank you.
Seeing no one else getting up from their chair, I'm going to move on to section seventeen, which is the motion to adjourn the meeting for this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.